Good evening, everyone. Let's see, who are we missing here? One, two, three, four. There's Commissioner Moody. Just Commissioner Lanier. Give her one more minute to be honest. And then we will get started. All right, well, it's a minute after. So we'll go ahead and get started. I assume Commissioner Lanier will join us as soon as she is able. But I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And we'll start tonight with a moment of silence before Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll move on to roll call. So if you would join me for a moment of silence as we begin our evening together. Thank you. Now, if you'd join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you. All right, next that will take us to roll call. Commissioner.
Commissioner Jones. I'm here. Commissioner O'Connor.
Present.
Commissioner Asasi.
Here.
Commissioner Ruppert.
Here.
Commissioner Moody.
Present.
Commissioner Lanier.
Present.
All right, Commissioner, let me take us to our first opportunity for public comment. But let me walk through. We do have three scheduled public hearings tonight. On the agenda, it actually says four, but I'm going to take three and four together with your support. And so the three scheduled public hearings. So if you are listening or have called in and you want to speak to one of the scheduled public hearings, we're going to ask you to hold off. I'm going to walk you through those right now. So our three scheduled public hearings. The first one is a public hearing up to consider a revised brownfield plan for the Michigan Meadows Project at 2233 Michigan Street. The second scheduled public hearing is a public hearing on the fiscal 2022 Uptown Business Improvement District Plan. And then three and four will take together because they're both related. Oh, I'm hearing a bunch of typing. I don't know who's not muted, but maybe whoever that is making. And then the third scheduled public hearing is a public hearing to consider an industrial development district and industrial facilities exemption certificate for the same project located at 1705 Northwood Drive Northwest. And this is part of our Walker View Industrial Park. So those are the three scheduled public hearings. The first one that I'm going to open up in just a moment is a public comment period for items that are on our agenda tonight. So earlier today, we discussed it and reviewed and voted on a whole host of agenda items. So the first public comment is related to specific items that we're voting on tonight. Then the three scheduled public hearings will be a little bit later on in the agenda. And then the last opportunity for public comment is at the end of the meeting. So you can give public comment by calling 456-3000-311. For the first opportunity of public comment, you hit one and then one. And again, that's specific to agenda items. For the public here on Michigan, public hearing on Michigan Meadows, you hit one and then two. For the Uptown Plan, Uptown Business Improvement Plan, you hit one and then three. And then for the industrial facilities permit at Walker View, in Walker View, you'd hit one and then four. And then the last opportunity for public comment, you can hit one and then five. So with that, before I open it up for public comment on agenda items, a few rules we have for public comment. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and then we'll give you three minutes to speak. And for the first public comment period, we ask that you specify what agenda item you're speaking about. And so now, before I go to public comment, I'll introduce Ms. Lily Beth, and she is available tonight for anyone who needs translation services. Lily Beth.
Thank you, Mayor Bliss. If you need interpretation services to address the City Commission, I will be able to assist. Please dial 616-456-3000 or 311 and choose the option you'd like to speak on tonight.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I, can I, just one moment. Mr. Vanderkolk, can you turn off your camera until it's the time for your item? Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, City Clerk. So now we'll open it up to first opportunity for public comment, and this is public comment on agenda items. And again, we ask you to share your name, the city that you live in. We'll give you up to three minutes to speak. And we ask that you specify what item. So if it's appointments number one or fiscal number two, please be specific. Daniel, do we have anyone in the queue for the first public comment period?
Good evening, Mayor. There's no one in the queue.
Okay, I'll give it just a few moments. City Clerk or Daniel, if you can let me know when our online has caught up, that would be helpful.
Joel, I don't have it pulled up if you do.
I think that is more than 30 seconds. So my guess is that it has caught up. So no, is there anyone in the queue, Daniel?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to close that opportunity for public comment, and that will take us to approval of the minutes. And these are minutes from our February 23 meeting. Can I get a motion?
Some move.
All right, moved and supported. Any questions or comments about this, about the minutes? All right, seeing none, City Clerk will call the vote.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Asasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries, thank you. That will take us to petitions and communications.
First one is a communication from Keith Chapman regarding their resignation from the Board of Zoning Appeals.
All right, that will be referred to Committee on Appointments.
Communication received from Jim Fowler regarding the city policies on permits and inspections.
That will be received and filed.
And a communication received from Watchdog Miller.
And that is also received and filed. All right, next that will take us to reports of city officers.
The first one is the county treasurer's report for the period of February 10, 2021 through February 19, 2021, in the amount of $17,163,303.74.
That is received and filed.
And then treasurer's report for the period of February 9, 2021 through February 23, 2021.
And that is also received and filed. All right, next that will take us to our consent agenda. So our consent agenda are items that we voted on earlier in the day where there was unanimous support for those items. So tonight with one voice vote, those items will be adopted. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda? All right, moved and supported, Commissioners. Any additional comments or questions? All right, seeing none. I'll turn to our City Clerk to call for the vote.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Asasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries, thank you, Commissioners. Next that will take us to ordinances to be adopted, and we have one ordinance to be adopted tonight.
The ordinance is amending, sorry. Ordinance amending Section 1 of the Budget Ordinance 2020-15 for Fiscal Year 2021 Amendment Number 12.
All right, can I get a motion? All right, moved and supported. Commissioner O'Connor, from our fiscal committee, you want to tell us about this?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just two items tonight. One is just a announcement of the $12 million to move the sewer, East Side Sewer Trunk from Market Avenue, which is a total of $12 million. And then the other is just $23,000 for some equipment expenditures from a grant for our Metropolitan Enforcement Team.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments about that? All right, I'll turn to our City Clerk for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Asasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes. And Commissioners, can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
Some move.
Moved and supported. City Clerk will call the vote.
Commissioner Ruppert.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Asasi.
Yes.
And Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries, thank you. All right, next that will take us to our scheduled public hearings. And as I indicated, we have three scheduled public hearings tonight. We'll start with the very first one. This is a public hearing to consider a revised brownfield plan amendment for Michigan Meadows LLC for the project located at 2233 Michigan Street Northeast. So notice of this public hearing was made pursuant to state law. So we'll start tonight with, I believe, let's see, Mr. Gracia. I'll ask him to join us. Oh, there you are. I'll ask Mr. Gracia to give us some background information on this. I do believe that we have Ryan Wheeler with us from the Wheeler Development Group. So we'll give Mr. Gracia an opportunity to speak. Then we'll welcome Mr. Wheeler to add any additional information, and then we'll open it up. If you all have any questions, then we'll open it up for public comment. So, Mr. Gracia.
Yes, well, good evening, Commissioners. Mr. Hunter, could you move Mr. Wheeler as a panelist, please? Notice he was still on the.
Yep, got it.
Yep, thank you. So this evening, we are, this is the public hearing for the revised plan amendment being considered for the project located at 2233 Michigan Avenue Northeast. The original brownfield amendment was approved by the City Commission on September 18, 2018. This project is now complete and includes a capital investment of $16 million in the creation of 87 residential apartments. So the major reasons we're here for the amendment is due to COVID, the executive orders related to prohibited construction from continuing at the project for a period of time, and also eligible costs related to poor soils encountered during the construction phase of approximately $365,000. We are bringing back this revised brownfield plan amendment. What this amendment would do is essentially extend the capture for an additional four years. And they are eligible activities. And it must be noted that the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority has approved and recommended this revised plan amendment at their January 27, 2021 meeting. And I'd open the floor to Mr. Wheeler to provide any additional details and answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you. Yep, it was certainly a challenging site and challenging time to try and finish the project up. If you recall, the main part of the project is served by a road that we constructed and needed over to the city, which was the majority of the brownfield eligible activity. So we created the entire right of way during that construction, which, you know, we had done 50-some soil borings on the site. Still ended up finding an entire buried swamp underneath the ground that needed to be entirely excavated, filled in with sand to build the road over to city spec. So that was a large part of the cost, and obviously being shut down for a period of time, trying to get back on track. And people moved in where we had already signed leases and had sold their homes. So certainly had some challenges, but overall completed the project and filled it up, got 87 new residents living in the city. So it turned out great. Certainly appreciate your support and consideration of our request.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Gracia or Mr. Wheeler? All right, seeing none, we'll open it up for public comment. So again, you can call 456-3000 and 311, number one, and then number two. So Daniel, do we have anyone in the queue?
There are no voters in the queue, Mayor.
Okay, I'll give it. City Clerk, do you have online pulled up to make sure? Okay.
I do.
Well, let's give it just a few, a few moments before we close to see if anyone calls in.
Graphic just popped, so let's give it a few more seconds.
Okay. All right, Daniel, has anyone called in?
No.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing, and that will be referred back to Committee of the Whole. That will take us to our second scheduled public hearing tonight, and this is a public hearing on the fiscal year 2022 Uptown Business Improvement District Plan. So Mr. Gracia will tell us about this again. Do we have anyone from the Uptown Bid with us tonight?
We do. We have Mrs. Sitzma and Ingrid Miller, the Executive Director of Uptown.
Okay, great. Are they, and are they panelists?
As I see now, I believe so, yes.
Okay, wonderful. You are both welcome to turn on your cameras and join. It's good to see you both. We'll start with Mr. Gracia, and then I'll turn it over to both of you to share any additional information, and then we'll open it up for public comment. Mr. Gracia.
Yes, Commissioner. So this evening's hearing is related to the Uptown Business Improvement District Plan and a one-year extension of their special assessment. The original assessment was passed on June 11, 2013, and there have been eight years, including finalizing this in '21. The first eight years of the special assessment have produced valuable results, and the Uptown Bid wishes to continue their progress for an additional year term. I will allow Sitzma and Ingrid Miller to talk specifically how they plan to use that, those funds. But just wanted to give a little bit of context to it. These certainly support our economic, our economic development and mobility strategic plan by supporting and creation, retention, and growth of businesses, and specifically small businesses and the assistance they're helping with, and also place-making activities and quality of life improvements. So they are not, the assessment itself will actually remain the same as it has, so there's no increase from the assessment. The preliminary assessment total will be approximately $123,000. And we have determined that the plan complies with the requirement set forth in City Commission Policy for Business Improvement Districts and Boards, and the Uptown Bid recommended approval of their plan at their January 13, 2021 meeting. I'll turn it over to the representatives from Uptown to provide more information.
Thank you for having us. Appreciate being here. And I would say that our renewal of the Business Development Improvement Tax is key in supporting our corridor improvement authority. And the way it does that is through a few things that I'll share that we spend our money on. So one of the things that we have done, we will be doing this fiscal year, next fiscal year, is purchasing trees for the district. But those trees would die if we did not have our bid funds to water and maintain them. So we will have 50 trees that will be planted in the spring and 50 in the fall throughout the Uptown District. We also recently partnered with Block by Block with our corridor maintenance contract, which provides ambassadors in the district who walk around, pick up garbage, remove graffiti. They will do maintenance repairs, small maintenance repairs on bike racks, trash cans, benches and the sort. And they also provide mobility assistance for somebody that they see in the area. We also have a contract with Simply Gardens that does sweeping, mulching, cleaning debris out of the drain gutters and maintains all of our plant beds. We do also promote businesses in the area through some social media push and contracts that we have. And finally, maybe one of the biggest impacts that we had about a year and a half ago is the hiring of Ingrid Miller, who is our Executive Director. And this money partially goes to her pay as well. And I don't know if Ingrid is on because she does have a three-month hold at home. So she's, oh, sorry, she is.
I was going to, she is on. Tammy, thank you so much, and thanks for your service on the bid. Really appreciate that. Ms. Miller, you want to add, add anything?
I would just add that even though our assessment, we're recommending no increase this year, we are increasing our level of service. So I think through combining efforts between Uptown, Grand Rapids Inc., the nonprofit overseeing our CIA and our bid, we're becoming more mature, more sophisticated in how we approach the tasks at hand. So an example of that is hiring the ambassadors to just do a better job of being stewards of our district. So while there's not an increase in the assessment, there will be an increase in the level of service we're offering.
Great, thank you. It's good to have you both with us tonight. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Moody, you've been active with Uptown and the Sid and Bid. You want to add anything?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Uptown is a very active board, and they have a lot of things that I believe that others should be able to take some advantage of, other seed groups. They're very active, they are active in their community. And I advocate for what they're trying to do and what they're going to do in the future. They have made tremendous strides. Sitting there on that board, sometimes I ask myself the question, what can I add? Because they have already got everything in place. So they seem to be in the right place at the right time, doing some dynamic stuff. So this renewal is right up the alley for them. And I think it's important that they continue the good work that they're doing, especially within the business community. So I appreciate being on that board, and I appreciate listening and hearing and seeing the good things that are taking place. We do need to make sure that we continue to give them good communication from things that they may have done in the past, that they may be able to move forward in the things that they need to do.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for your service on that board. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we'll open it up for public comment. So again, if you want to speak to this public hearing, again, related to the Uptown Business Improvement District Plan, you can call 456-3000 or 311, hit the number one and then number three. Daniel, do we have anyone in the queue?
There are no voters in.
All right, so we'll give it a few moments to make sure that our online presence catches up. So I'll hold off until I get the word from our City Clerk. Are we caught, City Clerk?
Yep, that should be good.
Okay, all right. Well, I will make a comment before we close this public hearing. And I'll, again, thank both Tammy and Ingrid for joining us tonight. Uptown Sid and Bid Board, I served on them when they were first created, and it's been a real joy to watch both of them just grow and expand and see the work that they're doing in Uptown. So thank you both. Really appreciate your service and all the work that you're doing. And I know that you both support a lot of the other Sids as they've gotten off the ground and as they also kind of get some funding in their banks. So we really appreciate that as well. So with that, we'll close that public hearing, and that will be referred back to the Committee of the Whole. All right, Commissioners, next that will take us to public hearings, and I'll, I'll read these together because they're related to the same project. So it's a public hearing to consider establishing an industrial development district for process engineering and equipment company at 1705 Northridge Drive Northwest. And again, as we all know this, the name that we call it by is the Walker View Industrial Park. And then also a companion is the public hearing to consider an application for 12-year industrial facilities exemption certificate filed process for, or filed process for, for process engineering and equipment company for a $2.5 million project at the same location, 1705 Northridge Drive Northwest in Walker View. So again, similar to the other two, notice of this public hearing was made pursuant to state law. We do have a guest with us tonight. We have Mr. Vanderkolk with us. But we'll start with Mr. Gracia giving us some background on this project, and then we'll turn to Mr. Vanderkolk to add anything. I'll open it up for you to have any questions. And then if you want to speak to this item, you can call 456-3000 or 311, hit number one and then number four. Mr. Gracia.
Yes, good evening. So this project is a 12-year industrial facilities, districting a district and a certificate for this project proposed by Project Process Engineering and Equipment Company at 1705 Northridge Drive Northwest in the Walker View Business Park. So the company is currently located in Comstock Park in Alpine Township in a 14,000-square-foot leased facility and has outgrown their space and subsequently are purchasing 4.4 acres and plan to construct a 24,000-square-foot office and warehouse building to meet their growth, anticipated growth needs. So the anticipated investment in the project is $3 million with 2.5 million of park construction cost. This will retain 27 employees, and they expect to create five new employees over the next two years with overall wages for those jobs at $28.36 per hour. Again, this is a pursuant to the Public Act 425 between Walker and Grand Rapids. The property is located in the city of Grand Rapids for property income tax purposes. The income taxes collected are distributed two-thirds to the city of Walker and one-third to the city of Grand Rapids. This will continue till through 2039. So with that agreement, the city anticipates collecting approximately $150,000 of new income taxes over the term of the agreement. So I'll allow Mr. Vanderkolk to share a little bit about the company and more details about the project.
Yes, thank you all for a moment of your time. I appreciate the opportunity here to talk to you all just for a few moments, as well as the opportunity to submit this application. Most of what we do currently in Walker Town, or I'm sorry, in Alpine Township has to do with distribution and manufacturing of industrial goods. We make a lot of industrial packages that go to a lot of the plants that are around Grand Rapids and are on the west side of the state of Michigan. And as such, as industry has come back in stride, we are looking to now be able to inventory a lot more components and pieces that we keep for a lot of those plants as they have to operate. We also service quite heavily the medical industry downtown, as well as the large university campuses, though they aren't currently as active as they had been in the past. This is coming back in stride. So thank you very much for being able to look at this. I will answer any questions you have, but, you know, the main industry we service is commercial and industrial.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderkolk. We appreciate you joining us tonight. I'll open it up to see if any of my colleagues have any questions. Commissioners, any questions before I open it up for public comment? No? Okay. So again, if you would like to be heard on this public hearing, you can call 456-3000 or 311, and you can hit number one and then number four. So Daniel, do we have anyone in the queue?
There is no one in the queue.
All right, well, again, just give this a few moments to let our online presence catch up with us to see if anyone would like to be heard. Mr. Gracia, I have a quick question while we wait. So does this also have to be approved by the city of Walker? I know sometimes in the past.
No, this 425 agreement is in effect. So they actually, we took the application based on that agreement that was already in place.
Okay, all right. I was wondering about that. I know for some of these projects, we've had it come back, and I know I usually hear from the mayor in Walker as he lets me know that they're supportive.
They had originally, Walker actually referred the company to us to start the process.
Okay, great. City Clerk, are we good? Okay, Daniel, do we have anyone in the queue?
No.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing, and that will be referred back to Committee of the Whole. All right, Commissioners, that will take us to our last opportunity for public comment tonight before I turn to all of you for comments. So again, this is an opportunity to be heard on any other item, and you can call 456-3000 or 311, hit number one and then number five. So we'll open this public comment period up, our last opportunity for public comment tonight. Daniel, do we have anyone in the queue?
Here comes the first caller.
All right, thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
I am Jennifer Taylor, a Grand Rapids resident, and I am calling in concern to the actions of officers last night, March 8, in response to a peaceful march. We, the Grand Rapids community that pays the bills of this department, demand immediate accountability and action to ensure rights, ensure our rights stop being violated. accountability and action to ensure rights, ensure our rights stop being violated. We demand answers as to why the GRPD chose to target peaceful protesters. We demand that whatever changes in personnel and policy must occur to prevent a repeat of last night happen immediately. We demand public statements from Chief Payne, Mark Washington, and Rosalynn Bliss on how they are working to prevent constitutional violations of this nature. We demand respect as those that you swore to serve, and the charges of those arrested be dropped.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, I'm Ryan. I'm a Grand Rapids resident. So I'm calling in concern about the protests last night and how the GRPD chose to unjustifiably arrest eight of our community protesters. And so I am demanding immediate accountability and action to ensure that rights stop being violated in Grand Rapids. The entire point of protesting and activism is to cause disturbance, to draw awareness to a particular issue. And we were in particular protesting Grand Rapids Police Department and how they unjustly treat the residents of this city. So for Grand Rapids Police to come out and tell us that we essentially aren't allowed to protest the way we were protesting and that the way we were protesting was somehow against the law, even though it is guaranteed to us by our constitution. So we are demanding that whatever changes in personnel and policy must occur to prevent a repeat of last night happen immediately. That includes public statements from Chief Payne and Mark Washington and Rosalynn Bliss on how they are working to prevent constitutional violations of this nature. And we demand respect as those that you swore to serve, and the charges of those arrested be dropped. I am proud to call this city my home, but the way that Grand Rapids Police is treating protesters, just calling for equality of people of color and Black Indigenous people of color, the way that they're treating these activists makes me less proud to call this my home. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Yes, my name is Kyla Addy. I am a Grand Rapids resident in Boston Square, and I am calling to, I'm concerned about the actions of officers last night, March 8th, in response to a peaceful march. We, the Grand Rapids community that pay the bills of this department, demand immediate accountability and action to ensure our rights stop being violated. We demand answers as to why the GRPD chose to target peaceful protesters. We demand that whatever changes in personnel and policy must occur to prevent a repeat of last night happening immediately. We demand public statements from Chief Payne, Mark Washington, and Rosalynn Bliss on how they are working to prevent constitutional violations of this nature. We demand respect as those that you swore to serve, and the charges of those arrested be dropped. That is all. Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Can you please lower the volume on your device? Thank you. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Michael. I've been living in Grand Rapids for, the city proper, for 15 years. I'm calling in concern to the actions of the officers last night, the March 8th protests, which was a peaceful march. These community members which were marching have been volunteering, giving back to the struggling during the pandemic, shoveling sidewalks, providing food during neighborhood cleanups, doing more work than the hot team, and trying to help better the lives of all these who live in Grand Rapids through activism. I'm not quite sure why these are the people that are being targeted by the police, especially during a peaceful protest, in regards to police violence. Seems a little wild to me. Yeah, I would like to demand accountability to ensure that our rights stop being violated. The police's statement saying falling back on permits is just preposterous since there have been permits, protests with and without permits all summer, especially by militias, you know, right-wing white supremacist militias that don't have permits, not getting arrested. And I just, yeah, I don't understand what's going on. So please, whatever changes need to be made in personnel and policy in order to prevent a repeat of last night's crazy actions by the police, that'd be awesome. I would like to insist that that happens. Some public statements from Chief Payne, Mark Washington, and Rosalynn Bliss on how they are working to prevent constitutional violations of this nature would be awesome. We demand respect as those that swore to serve, and the charges of those arrested to be dropped. Yeah, I am just, yeah, please do better. Thank you, I yield my time.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Can you please lower the volume on your device? Thank you. You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now.
My name is Kristen Green, and I'm from Howard City. To your work in the City of Grand Rapids, helping fill the gaps where Grand Rapids has marked failures. The City of Grand Rapids just keeps messing up because you just don't listen. Last night at the peaceful George Floyd march, where families attended to stand in unity with the Floyd family, Grand Rapids Police Officers corralled and surrounded peaceful marchgoers. This was, as others described, a systematic, targeted attack planned to take out BIPOC leadership from the Grand Rapids community. I want to be very clear. If you thought this approach was going to somehow quell our energy, you are seriously mistaken. Again, you have underestimated the seriousness of the racial disparities here in Grand Rapids, and you have miscalculated our drive to demand justice here in Grand Rapids and beyond. If this attack was somehow meant to set the tone for the upcoming peaceful demonstrations this spring and summer, you have made a significant error in judgment. Your unnecessary show of force, entrapment, and unfounded arrest are going to have a ripple effect that you will regret. The people will see you for what you are, and righteousness will prevail. We will not stop and cower to your intimidation tactics. We have a constitutional right to free speech, even when you don't like what we have to say. And Mayor Bliss, honey, as someone with a social work degree would understand, you have some ethical concerns in your lap that you need to deal with because you're perpetuating the oppression of Black and Indigenous people and limiting their free speech in your city. Shame on you, shame on the Commissioners of this city who refuse to engage in gainful dialogue, and shame on Grand Rapids Police Department for behaving in the exact manner we are out here fighting against. I'm done.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Madeline. I'm a resident of Grand Rapids. I am calling revoking the actions of last night. There was a very safe, secure, well-controlled protest action that was taking place last night. As this march was coming to completion, as we were on our last two blocks, heading back to where we started, and the Grand Rapids Police knew damn well we were heading to where we started, they surrounded and targeted and made a very specific plan to target specifically BIPOC protest leaders, not just protest leaders, community leaders, people who have been taking action in this community to fill gaps that this city is not meeting. I am calling to express my concern for the actions of these officers, to express that I demand immediate accountability and action to ensure that our rights stop being violated. We demand answers as to why the GRPD chose to target peaceful protesters. We demand that whatever charges be dropped. We demand that changes in personnel and policy must occur to prevent this from happening again. We demand public statements from Chief Payne, from Mark Washington, who was not elected but appointed, and from Rosalynn Bliss on how they are working to prevent the constitutional violations from occurring again. We demand respect. We demand respect, and we demand that these charges are dropped. And I am telling you that we will not be intimidated, we will not be cut down, we will rise up stronger than ever. Thank you, I yield my time.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Can you lower the volume on your device? Thank you.
How you doing? My name is DeAndre Jones. I stay in the City of Grand Rapids. First of all, I'd like to say hello to the Commissioners and the mayor. I hope you all been doing good. I'm actually flying to Dubai April 30th, I mean, March 30th. I'm going there for a sustainability meeting, so I'll be seeing one of the richest countries and one of the most innovative places on the planet, seeing what they'll be doing. I hope to bring that knowledge back here to the City of Grand Rapids and hopefully pour that into my project. I like to talk about the march for justice for Black lives yesterday. About six people got locked up. I do see both sides of it. I believe they were peacefully protesting, but I do believe that they should have stayed on the sidewalk. I do believe that the police did handle some of, because they did lock some people up that were on the sidewalk, and they did lock some people that were up on the streets. Also, the body cameras dropped that the police usually have on them. A couple of them dropped their body cams. I'm not too sure if that was pre-planned or not, but I feel like some of those individuals were targeted, and I feel like some of those individuals should have handled that properly. So like I said, I see both sides of it. I just wish that we could come to a better community standard of us being able to come together and not have so much problems with the police protesting or rally or march peacefully without people getting locked up. It was a very sad thing to see, but like I said, I understand both sides of it, of being a peaceful protester, and I also understand it from the law enforcement's part, just because I've been to a lot of protests around the City of Grand Rapids. I also like to talk about me going to the Backstreet Community Center. I'll be shadowing and learning about audits for green buildings at the Backstreet Community Center. That's something I'm looking forward to because I'll be eventually taking an exam to be certified in green buildings, and so I hope to get that certification so I could be able to educate more people on green buildings and reducing carbon emissions, especially on the south side of Grand Rapids. I hope to be able to educate people about green buildings. That's something I'm extremely proud of and passionate about, and I hope you guys have a great night, and I just hope that people from Justice for Black Lives start to protest peaceful, more peacefully, and I just hope that this Grand Rapids Police Department treats people fairly and not just target individuals because I feel like some of those individuals were targeted, but I do feel like some of those individuals should have got on the sidewalk and protested peacefully so there wouldn't have to been so many traffic stops and people blocking traffic. Have a great night, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Kellen. I live in the City of Grand Rapids. I'm calling in tonight to condemn the actions that the Grand Rapids Police Department took on Monday evening to demand accountability and to demand that all charges against protesters arrested that night are dropped. I personally was at this protest, and I saw everything that happened, and I am sickened. The police's response to the march was incredibly aggressive and was a prime example of how overpolice the citizens of Grand Rapids are. Monday night's peaceful protest was no different than any others that have occurred over the summer. And yet the protesters were treated like they were destroying the town. This was Monday night in the city. No one is out doing anything in Grand Rapids. Are you serious? Everyone's home, everyone's sleeping, doing whatever, looking at live streams of our protest. When the protest got to Breonna Taylor Way, police surrounded the protest group on all The protesters seeing the sweatless force from the police and decided to go on the sidewalk, but that did not seem to matter, as the police literally dove into the crowd and arrested the first protester and arresting seven more over time during the night. Last night, activists were harassed, abused, and denigrated, and the officers should be ashamed of performing their duties. The police wasted a huge amount of resources last night. They also caused a lot of damage, physical damage, mental damage, and financial damage to the individuals that now have to face these charges. The City of Grand Rapids did not need to spend all the money to terrorize members of the community. These protesters just wanted to show solidarity to George Floyd and condemn the police officer who killed him. Instead of arresting the protesters, police could have done a multitude of things, such as directing traffic, or they could have waited five more minutes for the march to end. Instead, they use unacceptable quality-of-life laws that are forged in racist undertones to overpolice members of the Grand Rapids community. It is in clear view that the Grand Rapids Police Department, and as such, the City of Grand Rapids, stands with Derek Chauvin, the murderous police officer who killed George Floyd. And the only way to remove this disgraceful stain, specifically on our city, is by removing all charges against these protesters and apologizing. Thank you, I yield my time.
Caller, can you please lower the volume on your device? Thank you. You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now.
My name is Jade. I'm from Howard City. I am 14 years old, and I attended the peaceful march for George Floyd last night. Everyone was peaceful, and we remain peaceful even when the police showed up. I am beyond mad about what happened last night. The police lined up in an intimidating way and charged the crowd and arrested leaders right off the sidewalk, which is exactly where we were told to be standing. The Grand Rapids Police Department has shown me exactly how they feel about me as a BIPOC member of this community, and I am scared and mad. You need to fix it. I want accountability. You grown-ups need to get it right. You are sending a message to us kids. We are listening. We are watching. That's all for me.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Can you lower your volume, please?
Oh, it is.
Yeah, okay.
Hello.
Yes, please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now.
Great. My name is Jeremy Tong. I'm a nurse, and I live here in Grand Rapids. I'm calling for the same reason everyone else has called tonight, to express my anger for what happened in the City of Grand Rapids, and particularly how the police department responded to peaceful protesting. We were practicing our constitutional right to free speech. The police could have stood within solidarity with the family of George Floyd, as we were trying to do. They could have waited for the march to end. They could have directed traffic. They could have done nothing at all, and it would have been better than what they did. They chose to target local leadership, particularly that of Justice for Black Lives, an organization which is doing so much to help actual members of the community by calling them out by name and specifically targeting leaders. We were peaceful. There was children there, there was dogs there. We didn't intend to do any harm, and we did not do any harm, yet this is being spun as a riot, when all we were doing was supporting George Floyd and the calling of four charges to be pressed against his murderer. So as others have said, I demand that the police are held accountable, and I want statements from Chief Payne, statements from Mayor Bliss, and from Mark Washington regarding why were the arrests made, what is being done to prevent future constitutional violations, and also asking for these charges to be dropped for the eight who were arrested. Thank you, I cede my time.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Ally Bates. I'm the president of Justice for Black Lives and one of the people who were arrested last night during the peaceful protest as we stood in solidarity with George Floyd's family in Minneapolis. First, I just want to say, what happened last night was clear that the Grand Rapids Police Department has been targeting not only myself but other community activists, and it's not the first time something like this has happened, and it most likely will not be the last, unfortunately. But what I want to know is what the city plans to do about the Grand Rapids Police Department, because it has been more than clear the department abuses their power and uses those who are targeting people who want to defund the police, who are filling these gaps in the community that the city is not addressing. We have tried meeting with the chief of police, we have tried talking to people. At this point, what do we do as community members? There's only so much we can do. You guys have the power to make the changes. Hold these people accountable. Stop allowing them to abuse us. All we want is accountability and funding for our community. We love our community. We're not doing these things because... and put more funding into our community, but apparently wanting better for your community makes you a target. That's something that each and every one of you guys needs to address. Thank you, I yield my time.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Donnie. I'm a Grand Rapids resident for 28 years. I was one of the eight that was arrested last night on March 8. I'm calling to address the situation and to demand that Grand Rapids community, or to demand that we gain more accountability for the situation. These situations are now being targeted. We are not only being targeted as activists or freedom fighters, or whatever you would like to call that, we are being targeted as organizers, people who are showing a deep concern for their community members, listening to their community members, going out here, shoveling sidewalks and driveways and picking up trash and providing food for the community that can no longer provide that for themselves, showing very deep concern as to how we're going to pick ourselves up in times of need. We're demanding, we're demanding for answers as to why GRPD chose to target peaceful protesters. We're demanding, we demand that whatever changes in personnel and policy must occur to prevent a repeat of last night happen immediately. It's about accountability and transparency for GRPD. I'm going to reiterate the fact that, you know, defunding GRPD does not mean that that is now, we have no more police. That means, defunding means, we take some of that money and properly fund it, reallocate it within the community so that the community can now flourish where it needs to be. Wherever we are suffering, where we don't have is where that money needs to go. We're trying to defund GRPD specifically so that the community can have more. If you choose, if you have, if you don't have something, if you don't have a thing in your life, then you choose to defund GRPD because why are we continuously giving our tax dollars, our money, into something, paying into something that isn't giving to us? If our crime rates are going up continuously, why are we, why is the cost for that going up continuously? That doesn't make any sense. Thank you, that is my time.
Caller, can you please lower the volume on your device? Thank you. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Gabrielle Skinner. I live in Grand Rapids. I'm calling in concern of the actions of the officers last night at the George Floyd march. The community that pays the bills of this department demand immediate accountability and action to ensure our rights stop being violated. We demand answers as to why the GRPD chose to target peaceful protesters. We demand that whatever changes in personnel and policy must occur to prevent a repeat of last night happen immediately. We demand public statements from Chief Payne, Mark Washington, and Rosalind Bliss on how they are working to prevent constitutional violations of this nature. We demand respect as those that you swore to serve and the charges of those arrested to be dropped. I will add that I've spoken to the majority of the people who were arrested last night, those eight. They are some of the most selfless, amazing people in this community. They will help anyone. It's really beautiful. They've done more for the community than it feels like the city has most of the time. That is all. Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Cece, and I am a Grand Rapids resident. I currently live in downtown Grand Rapids. I am calling in concern to the actions of GRPD last night, March 8, in response to JFBL's peaceful march. Justice for Black Lives hosted a rally and a march for George Floyd as we await the details of the trial of Derek Chauvin. I would like to know as to why GRPD chose to target peaceful protesters, specifically leaders, last night. What is the reason behind the arrest? Were they necessary? What statement is GRPD trying to make to the public with these arrests? We demand respect to those that you swore to serve, respect to these protesters who are trying hard to make positive changes in the community. What positive changes is GRPD doing for the community besides displacing the unhoused, oppressing and criminalizing the IPOC individuals, and stripping the rights of community members? We demand actual change and the charges of those arrested to be dropped. Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now. Hello, caller.
Oh, sorry, I had mute button on. So my name is Ben. I'm from Grand Rapids. I'd like to, I'm calling in, you know, same as everyone else, about the actions of the police last night. I saw them go onto a sidewalk, interrest leaderships. I think they're specifically targeting leadership because they don't want leadership protesting what they're protesting about, and this is the very issue. I think a lot of people have already said things that, you know, I could say, so I think I'll leave it on that. I yield my time, thank you.
Caller, can you please lower the volume on your device? You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you... Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Matthew, and I'm a Grand Rapids resident. I'm extremely concerned about the accusations that I heard regarding last night's protest, and if true, then there should absolutely be accountability on the part of the GRPD that's supporting these claims, and I'm wondering what the city can share to validate or speak to some of the claims that have been brought up tonight. This is not the first time that something like this has happened in our city. We saw similar course of events after the release of the Breonna Taylor verdict and the ensuing protest back in September of 2020. Hoping that the city can take measures, again, to address these concerns directly and also to provide greater transparency upfront ahead of these events, I think that would be better for everyone involved and would go a long way towards building trust with the community. Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Hi, my name is Maggie Smith. I am a resident of the 3rd Ward in the Ridgemore neighborhood, and I'm calling, as I think the entirety of all the other callers, to uplift and support leaders and the entire group of Justice for Black Lives and the eight people that were arrested unjustly last night. You know, we're back here again, right? We, last summer, I think over some people wrote in and voiced their opinion in other ways to beg the city to defund the police, which is a pretty remarkable number in our conservative town, and it was, this action was prevented, and so now we're back here again. And in response to a peaceful protest, to uplift the life of George Floyd and to seek justice for his murder that we all witnessed, this is how the GRPD responded, by arresting eight young people who we've heard just tonight, but we all know are doing an incredible amount of acts of love within our community. What else is the GRPD going to do? And how are you, our elected and appointed officials, how are you going to make sure that the people in our community are safe? The institution that you serve in right now, commissioners, mayor, it's rife with white supremacy. There's very little structure for you to do actual change. Those of you who believe that our police department is doing harm need to start taking immediate and powerful actions to change our community the way that our community is policed by our city. I join with all the other callers in calling for the charges to be dropped. I join all the other callers in supporting Justice for Black Lives in all of their demands, including public statements from Chief Payne, Mark Washington, and Rosalind Bliss, and how they are working to prevent constitutional violations of this nature. This needs to be the last event of this sort. You need to do your jobs, which is to serve the people of this city and to make sure the police can no longer enact this type of racist violence. I yield the rest of my time.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Tara, and I'm a senior social worker at Calvin University in Grand Rapids. I wanted to speak with you all today to discuss an idea that I believe will make Grand Rapids a more sustainable community. First, I wanted to make you guys aware of a very disheartening fact. According to the U.S. Department of Agriculture, 133 billion pounds of food is wasted in the United States each year. That is $161 billion worth of food that we are simply throwing away. Not only is this sustainably irresponsible, but economically irresponsible, too. It is important to note that food waste does not just waste food, but energy, water, packaging, and the resources that were used to make that food. It also contributes to a system that leaves many individuals and families hungry. Think of how many people could have eaten all of this food that is thrown away. While we may not be able to solve the problem of food waste entirely, we still have a responsibility to do what we can. Thankfully, there is an easy and tangible way that we can do this. Organic Cycle is an environmental organization right here in Grand Rapids that takes 100% of food, even cooked food, yard, plant, and paper waste, and turns it into soil. All you have to do is sign up for a subscription, put your items in your Organic Cycle bin, and the company will come to pick it up and take care of the rest. The leftovers you're thinking of throwing out, your sad-looking Christmas tree, junk mail, you can turn all of your trash into environmental treasure. While it is important to promote Organic Cycles to our neighbors, one of the primary sources of food waste comes from restaurants. Restaurants have to throw away any uneaten food on the customer's plate and usually have to throw away all extra food at the end of the day. However, this does not have to be the case. I believe that all restaurants in Grand Rapids should have Organic Cycle bins to help our community reduce food waste. Now, it'd be easy to argue that because of COVID-19, Organic Cycle is a low priority, given that many local businesses are hurting economically. How can we expect them to pay for an Organic Cycle subscription? This is the wonderful part, they don't have to. We can apply for a grant through the Grand Rapids Foundation to receive funding specifically for sustainably related initiatives in our neighborhoods. This way, we not only can care for the earth and our neighbors, but care for our local businesses during difficult times. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is JR. I live in Grand Rapids on Anishinaabe land. I'm calling tonight in support of the eight people who were singled out, attacked, and arrested last night by the GRPD. This was a blatant effort to intimidate people who are critical of the police and their history and activity in this city, and the charges against them need to be dropped immediately. Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Suzanne, and I live in Grand Rapids. I am calling tonight to show my support for Justice for Black Lives and the protesters last night. I'm calling to express my concern for the actions against the local activists by the GRPD last night. This is a peaceful protest to show solidarity and demand justice for George Floyd's murder at the hand of the police, the people who are supposed to protect and serve us. Marching in the street does not make this protest violent. I have engaged in multiple protests in the last year that were all in the streets and zero arrests were made. Why was this different? As I listen to people describe what happened last night, I can't help but think about what happened this summer in Mont Haven, New York, where NYPD corralled protesters so that they could surround them, at which point they arrested media and medics so that they could really start acting without impunity. Protesters were attacked, assaulted, and arrested. This incident is now being investigated by Human Rights Watch. How many protests away are we from a horrifying scene like this? As a resident of this city, I demand immediate action and accountability to stop the constant violation of people's rights. You can turn over parking enforcement to GR Mobile all you want, but nobody is fooled. Actions speak louder than words, and your actions last night spoke volumes. GRPD walked all over our First Amendment rights and needs to be held accountable for that. We demand answers from Chief Payne, Mark Washington, and Mayor Bliss on how they are working to prevent future constitutional violations and hold GRPD accountable. We demand respect, and we demand the charges against all arrested be dropped. I yield the rest of my time.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
My name is Nikki, and I live in Grand Rapids. Last night, the GRPD with premeditated efficiency corralled escalated tensions with and ultimately arrested on bogus charges peaceful protesters that were exercising their constitutionally protected rights of free speech and assembly. Used leaders of color were clearly and deliberately targeted and have reported back that their own names were used before they were grabbed out of the line. We, the Grand Rapids community that pays the bills of this department, demand immediate accountability and action to ensure our rights stop being violated. We demand answers as to why the GRPD chose to target peaceful protesters. We demand that whatever changes in personnel and policy must occur to prevent a repeat of last night happen immediately. We demand that the public statements from Chief Payne, Mark Washington, and Mayor Bliss on how they are working to prevent further violations of our constitutional rights as citizens of this city. We demand all charges against these protesters be immediately dropped. All evidence refutes the narrative from the GRPD that these arrests were necessary. I would love someone to explain to me how protesters are arrested for amplified sound three hours before the noise ordinance starts, when I've personally been told by the city event planning office on multiple occasions that megaphones are allowed and only electronically-plugged-in amplified sound is in violation. I would like to know how these protesters were arrested for blocking traffic when in the videos we can see squad cars blocking them in to corral them. I would love someone to explain to me on this commission and on this board how it is a useful, useful for my tax dollars to be locking people up that do nothing but help this community and are standing up for racial justice. I was planning to march last night in solidarity with the family of George Floyd, but was unable to, and I woke up to a livestream watching people I care about face down on the concrete, surrounded by cops, and getting cuffed on a street that you all have dubbed Breonna Taylor Way, for peace, and they were for peacefully... and they were peacefully protesting police violence. Please do not let this tragic irony be lost on you. I yield the rest of my time.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
This is BJ. I live in downtown Grand Rapids. First of all, I do support the people who want to protest peacefully. I would also like the people who protest peacefully to realize that increasingly downtown Grand Rapids is a residential neighborhood. There are a lot of people who live here. And when you are blocking streets and when you are yelling in our neighborhood, it is disturbing the peace. And it does make it difficult for us, if we're driving home, to get to our parking places and to walk back to our residences. Last night, the police asked several times for the protesters to get out of the street. And when they didn't get out of the street, that's when they were arrested. If the protesters would have gotten out of the street when they asked to, they wouldn't have been arrested. And I'd like to thank the police for doing a good job in an increasingly difficult environment. Thank you very much.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name. Can you lower the volume on your device, please? Thank you. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Ayla and I live in the city of Grand Rapids. And I pay taxes in the city of Grand Rapids. And I would just like to know why the cops yelled last night, came and swarmed peaceful protesters, the cops that we pay for with our tax dollars. I'd like them held accountable. They harassed the peaceful people. They harassed the people that were standing up for rights of other people that were murdered. They're standing up for their own rights. They were not doing anything that was illegal. They were not vandalizing property. The people that were being arrested were not doing anything to the cops. People were chanting. People were having camaraderie between themselves. They walked all the way down, up Monroe, Michigan, past city buildings, past the federal building, past the state building, all kinds of other buildings. But no, when they get to the police station is when they get arrested. Not just arrested, but swarmed, swarmed by police cars, swarmed by unmarked vehicles. People get swarmed in an intersection where they can't leave. It was absolutely grotesque what the Grand Rapids Police Department did. And I'd like them held accountable. I'd like to know why they did it. I'd like a statement from the Grand Rapids Police Department. I yield my time.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Scott. I live in the city of Grand Rapids. I am calling about the response that the police officers did regarding the peaceful protest of last night. Essentially, they need to, there needs to be some kind of accountability that's held because the way they reacted to a peaceful protest was unconstitutional. And we demand answers as to why GRPD chose to target them. And we need some kind of action, some kind of policy of some sort that will ensure that we as protesters, people in the streets, or just in general, that our First Amendment rights will not be in danger. And we, I want a public statement from Chief Payne, Mark Washington, and Rosalynn Bliss on what we're going to do to prevent this happening in the future. And the charges need to be dropped of those who were arrested. Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Hi, my name is Casey. I'm a resident of Grand Rapids. I'm calling because since June, we have been communicating with the City Commission. Since June, they have been asking us to gather the voice of the community, sit down with them, talk about our needs, and build a relationship. Since June, we have sat down with them numerous times, Chief Payne and Mark Washington, to be specific. We have gone out. We have gained the voice of the community. We have built a relationship with the community. We have offered resources to the community. We have learned the GRPD budget, the city budget as a whole. We have held up everything that they have asked for on our end. We are met with daily harassment. We are met with arrests. We are met with stolen personal property that is never given back. At what point, Mark Washington, at what point, Eric Payne, are you going to show up for the relationship that you're asking for? We are here with total transparency, giving the information and offering the information that you asked of us. You do not listen to the voice of the community. We are met with police brutality and harassment. When we speak up about personal targeting, they throw in a handful of extras to make the demographics look a certain way. That's fine. But if you're going to sit in our face and ask to show up for that relationship, I'm going to do the same to you. When are you going to show up to this relationship that you're asking for? Because here we are. This is what we're asking for. This is what the community is asking for. Address these issues, and we'll be out there every day addressing them and letting you know what will you do? Arrest us? Kill us? When will this end? Show up to the relationship you're asking for. Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
What's up, Daniel? Long time.
Hi, Jimmy, go ahead.
Yeah, first of all, I want to say, yeah, the uterus. I can't figure out why these clowns are texting in or would come here. It's good that our first responders are on top of these clowns that live in the sticks. They come to the city with guns and then try to perpetrate to kidnap our governor. Maybe they should come to the city to learn how to make love and marry and dance with the uterus. On a more serious note, though, this young lady keeps coming to the city and she was Black Lives Matters. I think we need to acknowledge our first responders, which are the 911 callers first. There's a group of civilian police officers that answer the phone, I believe, and they're underrated. And then back to this young lady that was in cuffs. Every time she comes to the city, something bad happens. I think she should be banned from the city. And that's the truth. You know, Black Lives Matter, George Floyd and all that stuff, it's great. But our city cannot be the sacrifice or the example. The example sat on the City Commission and their Reverend Nathaniel Moody. There are people like Sanita Lanier and Melissa Isasi. And although I don't like some things, they are individuals like Joe Jones. There are people that come from Port Arthur, like our city manager. There are names like Gracia. And although I hate to say it, and I'm not in a bad mood, something has to be done to her. We cannot add people perpetrating that they're coming here with guns, number one, to protect the city, and then they want to kidnap our governor. And number two, we can't have people coming here saying they're going to have a peaceful protest. And now they want to protest even at this time because they didn't follow the rules and the protocol. And they're disrupting the flow of traffic and our peace and quiet. Anyways, thank you, guys. It's nice to hear you, Daniel. I think you got a little chuckle out of it, too. Thank you, guys.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Dana Montgomery and I'm a resident of Grand Rapids in the 2nd Ward. I'm calling to echo the concerns of other residents about the actions of the GRPD officers last night arresting eight people while they were peacefully protesting in solidarity with George Floyd's family. Solidarity surprised all of their demands, including all charges being dropped immediately. I was disappointed but not surprised by the actions of the GRPD last night. This is what the GRPD does. They enact violence and white supremacy. I have also been the victim of targeting by GRPD for calling for justice in our city. But the violence has never been acted by organizers or from protesters with Justice for Black Lives. If you want to talk about violence, then look at the GRPD and their long history of violence. We demand accountability for the violence they perpetuated against protesters last night, protesters who do more for the community than probably any city official in this meeting. You all talk a big game about equity and wanting this to be a city for all, but your inaction has shown you only want it to be a city for wealthy white people. Hold your people accountable, drop the charges, stand on the side of justice instead of on the side of oppression. Thank you.
Caller, can you please lower the volume on your device? Thank you. Your three minutes starts now.
Hi, my name is Madeline and I know that I already called in once more, but I want to make one real quick point. You just had somebody call in here and make threats to a member of our community. And I want to know what you're going to do about it because that's not acceptable. You had somebody call in here and make threats to Ally. I need you to deal with that. I need you to deal with this Jimmy situation. This is not okay. Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Can you please lower the volume on your device? Your time starts now.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Hi, it's me again, Ally, based from Justice for Black Lives. And I really just want to address the fact that somebody literally just called in here and made threats against me personally for my peaceful protest and saying every time I come into the city, something bad happens. And I really just want to point out the fact that every time something bad happens, I am not the common denominator. It is GRPD. Like I have said before, all I want is defunding GRPD, reallocating those funds into our community. And I will not be threatened. I will not be afraid. I refuse to take any of that from anyone. So if you feel like you want to threaten me, come and fucking get me.
Okay, Mayor, we need to...
That was the final caller.
Yep. And the protocol, can you clarify for the public in the future? I thought we were only allowing people to call in once.
Yeah, that is our standing rules, city manager. So I'll call up with our city clerk. I think he actually went to find Daniel to remind Daniel of that. And I think that's why he's not at his desk right now. And we also do want to remind folks that we do have rules around appropriate language as well. So with that, we'll close that public comment period, and I will turn to my colleagues. And I'll start tonight with Commissioner Moody.
You sure you want to start with me, Madam Mayor?
I do, Commissioner. Is that okay? Can you hear me okay?
I hear you fine, perfectly, real good. First of all, I want to commend the Grand Rapids Police Department for doing their job last night. As far as social justice for black lives, I'm sure they have some serious concerns about some things. But number one, and their community...
Commissioner Moody, I don't know of anybody else, but I'm having a hard time hearing you. I don't know if your microphone's covered.
I hope it's not. Can you hear me now, city manager? Okay. As I said earlier, I commend the Grand Rapids PD for doing their job last night. Social justice for black lives probably do have some concerns. But at the same time, our laws and regulations should be enforced. And I want to make it very clear right now to all those who are listening, I will not be voting to defund the Grand Rapids Police Department. So you can save some of your emails and calling me and asking me to do so. That's not going to happen. Secondly, I do not believe that social justice for black lives has done everything that they claim they have done. If they've done a lot of stuff in the community, then social justice for black lives, why didn't you come forward and protest the 38 shootings that took place in 2020? That was a travesty within our community. I understand that George Floyd died at the hands of the police in Minneapolis, or one officer, but that is not the Grand Rapids PD. I do believe that in the past, in terms of my work in this community, I'm a resident of this community, been in this community for over 65 years. And I'm sure I've done more work in this community than any of you in any period of time. I welcome conversations from you all. I welcome a conversation, not anything negative, but positive conversation. So if you want to talk positive with me, give me some insight on what plans you have. If it was up to me, I would tell the mayor, city manager, and the police chief, whom I have the greatest respect for, not to respond to you. That's my comment for the night. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Moody. Commissioner O'Connor? Okay, Commissioner Isasi?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two things that I'd like to say tonight. One is thank you to those who called in tonight. I haven't watched any video. I became aware of the situation last night due to the briefing from our city manager, Mark Washington, who kept us up to date. And, you know, I think in this moment, in this time, my focus has been to continue to work on the issue of prevention. And how can we make sure that everyone is experiencing our community safely? We've talked about that as a body at our mid-year review. We just talked about that at our review that we had at the end of February. And I appreciate all of my colleagues' comments and the work that happens, which is inside an institution and an organization. This is the work that we've signed up for to do this inside work. And I think sometimes that looks different than what the outside work is, than what the work is of an organization that might be leading on different issues. So I do want to say that about the callers tonight. The second thing that I want to say is more of like a point of personal privilege, as tomorrow is the day of a one-year anniversary of COVID coming into the state of Michigan. I remember this day last year very clearly. I had gone to fill in for Mayor Bliss at the City Connection. And then I went shortly to spend the last couple hours with my aunt, who passed away that evening, not due to COVID, but due to cancer. And so, you know, the point of personal privilege is that I know that over this last year, we have all lost so much, whether it's the feeling of being able to connect with one another, you know, for all of us to be together as a team, for people in our staff who have made choices about what's going on in their lives, childcare and things like that. And certainly all those who have lost family members to COVID or lost family members during this time and couldn't have that ritual to be together. And so that's kind of what I'm holding on to today is thinking about those in our community who have been impacted, thinking about the people that I see, you know, the many, many healthcare workers that have been filling our vaccination clinics, who have been doing work to hopefully move forward and to move past this and to not be the same. I think we've all said that we don't want to go back to what has been our reality in the past. We want to do things different, and I do think that we are working towards that. And I thank you all for that work. I'm proud to do that work with all of you. And it's not always easy and doesn't always look flawless. But I'm going to wake up tomorrow... But I'm going to wake up tomorrow, hopefully, and to continue to do that. So thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for elevating the fact that we're at our one-year anniversary, and it has indeed been a really challenging year. Let's go to Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to thank everyone who called in on this evening and provided their thoughts and opinions on the various topics that were covered. And I also want to take an opportunity to really give a shout out to our city treasurer, John Lebinsky. John, to his credit, has been working diligently to diversify, you know, the folks who essentially handle the finances of our city. And the challenge was put out for him to seek opportunities to engage investment brokers who, you know, in which the ownership are folks of color. And he has done that. He's done very well with that and has succeeded in bringing on four firms that meet that criteria. And I think it's a really big deal for a number of reasons. One, it speaks to, I think, our continued focus and commitment to equity and the fact that although that's an area in which there aren't many people of color who provide that service, to his credit, John went out and found that and is working diligently to increase that number. So I really want to recognize our city treasurer for that because, again, I think it's important. I think it speaks to the importance of, again, having more inclusive economic growth, not just in our beloved city, but also in our country. And so I just want to recognize John Lebinsky. Also want to recognize and just give my regards to the family of Noah Webly. Mr. Webly is a very well-known figure, a Grand Rapids native, African-American gentleman who was a longtime art teacher in GRPS. He then went on to be a freelance photographer for the GRPS. He was a phenomenal bass player, jazz bass player. And he left us on last month. He died on last month. And I just really want to recognize his lifelong commitment to Grand Rapids and just know that he will be missed. And again, very, very individual who had significant integrity and again, someone who was an absolute jewel to our community. So that is it, Mayor. Thank you.
Commissioner Lanier? And Commissioner Rappart?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I too want to express my thanks to those who called in and for sharing their concerns with us. And mostly for them drawing attention to this critical trial that's happening right now. While I'll be waiting that verdict in the next couple of days. I did want to highlight one thing related to what Commissioner Jones just said about today. In the two committees, two of the committees that I serve on, the Community Development Committee and the Economic Development Project Team, we heard about six projects, three of which we approved today and three of which will come to us in the next month, that will yield an investment of $3,416,485 into micro-local minority and women-owned businesses. And so those are big numbers. A couple of those bids are 100% micro-LBE contracts. So that's just huge strides for the city. And I just want to give my thanks to the Economic Development Team, Diversity and Inclusion Team, the Engineering Department, the people that handle those bids and work with those contractors. It's a great success, and it's demonstrating upward progress in all the goals we want to meet in that area. So certainly wanted to celebrate that tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's go to city clerk.
I have nothing this evening, Mayor.
Okay, city attorney?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and city commissioners for your work today. I want to give a couple of shout-outs. First of all, I want to thank our legislative team that's comprised of Karen Ferris and our partners, Steve Carey and Bill Jackson, who have just done an outstanding job making sure that we're able to be in line for potential resources, both at the state level and the federal level. And we are direly in need of that support as a community. I also want to acknowledge the work of Connie Bohatch and Erin Bankhoff in advocating for additional funding that will come to our area, about $38 million in Kent County for emergency rental assistance that will be able to help people stay in their homes, preventing them from eviction, as well as help with homeless and housing support. We look forward to that partnership with the Continuum of Care and United Way and all of our other partners. It's going to help to distribute that funding once we receive it here in our area. I do want to just say a few remarks about some of the comments tonight around concerns around public safety. And I would say one of the comments earlier is to focus on prevention. I would say in this instance, the best prevention would have been to proceed with a permit application. And that would have helped all to be aware of the route as well as what was needed to ensure that everyone was safe. Had that happened, our event staff and others would have advised those that were participating that perhaps the best route would have not to march around the DeVos Center, which was in openly administering emergency vaccinations for COVID-19 and worked on alternate routes that would not have inhibited people from coming in and out of the parking ramp in the event center. However, having said that, the escalation or the de-escalation that many people have pointed out to, I talked to the police chief, and the police chief has already initiated a review of the matter, and that is being done. But neither I, well, I certainly don't have the power, nor does the mayor, any elected official, to dropping the charges. Those are prosecutorial discretion. And so there is a process for that to occur. I will not speak anyway within that process, and it has to work itself out. But traffic safety is of utmost importance. Appreciate DeAndre who called in, and I remember some earlier activities during the summer. And there have been occasions where the department has, because of traffic safety, enforced the law that resulted in people impeding or blocking the intersection. And arrests have been made previously, not on every instance, and I can't speak to every instance. But what I can say is that I too have been concerned, even in participating in protests where people have not made the appropriate event application, have not coordinated the appropriate intersections for blocking. I often have been concerned about traffic safety being an observation and support to where I've had to go and myself stop an intersection. And I remember doing that with DeAndre. And that's just not the safe way to do it. So I want to encourage everyone, regardless of the reason for the protest, the best way to de-escalate and ensure the safety of both protesters as well as people who are in the area is to apply for a event special permit application. A special events office is happy to do it. As a matter of fact, during the time of COVID, we've been waiving many of the fees to make it happen. And many instances have even offered to help fill out the application for some. But there have been some who have just insisted on not going that route. So I would encourage those in future efforts to organize, to plan ahead, and to coordinate with the special events office. That will help to mitigate any confusion about the intentions of organizers. And secondly, regarding the police department itself, I'd want to give the chief an opportunity to continue to address his plans to build trust and ensure safety in this community. And in order to do that, we have to work together. We have to communicate together and communicate with one another. And I think the department attempted to do that in advance of the event that was planned. And I can't speak to the outcome or the results of it, but apparently more communication is needed in that endeavor. So again, I too want to honor the life of George Floyd and what many of those that came out to support and advocated for in terms of improving what we can do to make sure that all communities are safe from crime and from overpolicing. But I think it is definitely a two-way street. So I would, certainly the police chief and I are continuously willing to work with community, but it takes two. Respect goes both ways. In many of the comments that are said in public demonstrations, we professionally listen, even if it's hard to hear, but do note some of those words could never be repeated out of the mouth of the police chief or the officers because we want to do it respectfully. And I think that's the point we have to get to as a community and not say we can't have the tough conversations, but we have to get to a point where we can have these hard conversations, but do it in a way where we're talking with each other and not at each other. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, city manager, and I'll just add my thoughts. I appreciate everyone calling in, and I echo what our city manager said. We want to make sure that people can safely gather and demonstrate. And that's especially true as our downtown and our neighborhoods get busier as our economy starts to reopen, and there's going to be more crap on the street than there has been over the last 12 months. And we want to make sure that the individuals who are demonstrating, our pedestrians, are safe and that we're able to be helpful in making sure that there's safe routes identified. So I encourage you, as the city manager said, to work with our staff to make sure that we're able to do that. And then, secondly, commissioners, I will add, I appreciate Commissioner Jones recognizing an individual who has passed, and I want to share with you, an incredible individual in our community, a Grand Rapidian for 95 years who passed away this past weekend. Many of you knew Rupert McGinn. He often was called Rup or, as he called himself, Mr. Wonderful. Actually, many people who knew him called him Mr. Wonderful. If you didn't know, he was an employee of our city for over 30 years. He was the director of our water system, and he was very, very active in the Second Ward and in Nika. And so as a Second Ward commissioner, I got to know him and his family quite well. His daughter, Betsy Hernandez, called me over the weekend on Saturday and let me know of his passing. So we just want to really honor his service to our city, his really unbelievable years of service to our city, and send our condolences and sympathies to his family and friends. So with that, we will adjourn tonight, commissioners. I hope you enjoy the rest of this night, and I will see you all soon.